For automobile oriented commercial, 5603 Grape Road. This is signed by Mitch Galtz. We also have petition number 2021-06 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council and the Michoacan City Plan Commission, petition to rezone property at 2777 Lincoln Way East. This is to rezone from C1 General Commercial to C1 Automobile Oriented Restaurant. This is signed by Chris Cassano of Pizza Hut of America.
Thank you. This evening, we have no report of any special committee, so we will move into ordinances on first reading.
We have proposed ordinance number 2021-14, an ordinance transferring funds from the Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund of the City of Michoacan to the Local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund of the City of Michoacan for the calendar year ending December 31st, 2021, and in addition, ordinance appropriating additional funds for the year ending December 31st, 2021. This is a transfer of funds and additional appropriation in Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund in the amount of $386,620 to the Local Bridge and Road Matching Grant Fund. It's also an additional appropriation for funds to Local Bridge and Road Matching Grant Fund in the amount of $765,240.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-14 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-15, an ordinance declaring an emergency and determining the expenditure of additional funds for the year ending December 31st, 2021. This is additional funds in local road and street in the amount of $250,000 in MVH restricted in the amount of 1 million, I'm sorry, $750,000 totaling 1 million.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-15 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-16, an ordinance of the City of Michoacan, Indiana, establishing the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Grant Fund.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-16 will also be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolutions?
Resolution R. 2021-11, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Michoacan, Indiana, approving a lease between the Michoacan Redevelopment Authority and the Michoacan Redevelopment Commission in approving the issuance of lease rental revenue bonds by the Michoacan Redevelopment Authority and other matters related thereto.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed resolution 2021-11. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium.
Mr. President, Members of Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. The resolution before you this evening is essentially the final council action for the stimulus bond that was requested or suggested by the administration. This goes back to the beginning of the COVID epidemic when we were talking about what steps we needed to take to address what we thought was going to be a very significant issue and, of course, has been. On the stimulus bond, if you recall last year, we looked at the allocation of federal funds immediately to our social service agencies as step one, a small business loan as step two, and the third step was a stimulus. So, having discussed it at that time and receiving relatively favorable feedback, we went through the process and continued design on multiple projects. If you recall, this is a two-tiered step process. So, we had a first tier of projects and a second tier of projects. The idea was to try to get more than half of the, what were $45 million is the amount of construction that we designated. The overall cost is $50 million. The analysis that was done by Baker Tilly identified interest rates ranging between a half percent and 2%. And the reason why we felt this was so important and prudent at this time was because the cost of money is so low. We knew, or had envisioned that there would be a decrease in construction, particularly with what was occurring at Notre Dame, and knowing that school corporations specifically were pulling back and not doing as much construction. We want to keep the labor force busy, and particularly busy in Michoacan. So, as part of this, the $45 million, the first portions of it, we had a number of road projects, including Niles and Cedar, that have already been awarded and issued. And then the large project that we can't issue without the approval of the stimulus bond is the ICE project downtown Michoacan. So, when you look at the ICE project, we had budgeted $18 million for the construction portion of that project. The bids came back at just under $15.2 million. So, significantly favorable bidding climate. And as I indicated in my email, when we bid the Beer Garden on Phase Two, that came in slightly over the engineer's estimate, which wasn't surprising at the time, but we only had one bidder on that phase of the project. This time, we had five bidders for the project, and that gives you an idea of the change in climate that is occurring out there. Some of the other projects, and the next most significant project that's actually in Phase Two, is the replacement for Fire Station Number Two on the north side. I know Mayor Wood will speak in a second. I'm sure he'll elaborate in more detail, but I think the one thing that we wanted to do, and as we stressed in the beginning of this, when you're talking about particularly the ICE building, at an $18 million construction, total project cost of over $20 million, we knew if you're 10% off, that's a $2 million potential issue, and that's why this is being done in phases, not to just put, we have a significant number of other projects when you look at our water projects and also the City Hall project that are separate from this. We have a whole lot of significant construction that's happening right now, so we actually think it's good to phase the implementation of the stimulus bond projects. But the Fire Station Number Two, that could be easily an $8 million project, but now we feel much more comfortable. Our next step, should you approve it this evening, is going to be to move forward with the hiring of the consultant to get under design where that project is bid next year. So, right now, obviously, this is contingent on the stimulus bond funding. The projects like Cedar Street and Niles Avenue, because we're using TIF revenues out of the project, we can adjust cost, and that's why those projects were bid and awarded ahead of time, is because we can incorporate that into our regular funding cycle. Like I said, the ICE project and the Fire Station, we definitively cannot as part of that. As Baker Tilly identified, the, once the bond issue, once you get into a normal payment period, the payment is a little over a half million dollars a year, I'm sorry, over $5 million a year. I got my zero in the wrong place. I wish. But we're looking at a total cost of just over $50 million and paying it back essentially over an 11-year period. It's a 12-year issuance, but what happens is there's a reserve fund that's collected, and then that reserve fund is used to pay off the final year of the bond issuance, and we're looking at 12 years right now for that total. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. Catherine Finello, our Special Bond Counsel with Krieg Devault is here to be more precise. I'm obviously not the expert to talk about on the legal documents. They're quite complicated. And then Mayor Wood, I know, wants to make a few comments, so, thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, Dave Wood, Mayor, here to urge you to support Resolution 2021-11. This has been a process several months in the making, as Mr. Prince mentioned, part of our three-tiered strategy for COVID response and stimulus in this case. Our first approach, our first leg of the stool, if you will, was to do immediate response to our citizens, which we have done. Our second response, our second leg of the stool, was small business loan at zero interest, which we have done. Now, this is the third more long-term part of our plan. And we came up with the idea, and I gave it to our recovery czar, is what I call him, Mr. Prince, as well as project manager and many other hats that he's wearing these days, but appreciate all of his hard work on this. He's got a lot of time devoted to this. But we came up with this because of the fundamentals that Mr. Prince brought up. Number one, we knew that money right now is extremely cheap in terms of interest rates. Number two, we have the capacity within our TIF because we really carry almost no debt. Not only no debt will remain in our general fund, but even in our TIF, we carry very little debt, so we have a lot of capacity. Number three, these are projects that we have on our list of work to get done over, gosh, what could be the next 10 years or so, and we felt like getting some of this work done now in a favorable bid environment really saves our citizens a lot of money. And lastly, this is stimulative. This is meant to stimulate the local economy through the companies that are bidding this work out, who are from here and who pay taxes here and who, most importantly, employ here. And so, we have already bid out a couple of the projects, and what we're seeing this year in terms of our bidding, it bears out why we're doing this. We are seeing right now multiple bidders on each of our projects that we put out for bid. Last year, we were maybe seeing one bidder for a project. In fact, we had to try to talk people into bidding in some cases. Well, the fact that there are multiple bidders now says that, you know what? They're hungry. They want our work. Secondly, we have some significant projects that will keep companies busy over a long period of time. And what are we seeing on the bids? Roughly, if last week's project that we bid out is an indication, the ironworks Phase Three and Four, we anticipated it to be about $18 million. We were kind of in our mind thinking, trying to get comfortable, that it could be 20. Came in at 15, just and some change, 30%. And we're seeing that on every bid package, thereabouts. Even our street projects are coming in well under what the engineer's estimates are. So, we're already saving money on these projects. And I guarantee you, you know, the money we're saving now, it's a heck of a lot cheaper to build now than it is going to be in 10 years. And we have the benefit of having these projects done. It's also stimulative for Michoacan neighborhoods because this work, a lot of it's being done in Michoacan neighborhoods. So, it brings new infrastructure into parts of our city that need it the most and therefore improves our services, improves our environment, improves our, you know, just quality of life for our citizens. So, we also envisioned that this would benefit the citizens' quality of life. So, we have a couple of park-oriented types of projects. We have a lot of infrastructure projects in this, so Cedar Street is one, Niles Avenue being another. Complete tearouts, all-new infrastructure underground, all-new infrastructure above ground. And when we leave it, after it's done, the neighborhood is far better off. And then, it's public safety is a big part of this with a new, much-needed fire station. We're replacing a fire station that is antiquated, designed and built in the 1960s when we were a much different fire department than we are today. So, now, we, the way we deliver those services is completely different, but yet this fire station cannot adapt to the way we deliver our services now. It's been on our wish list for a long period of time, and we just, you know, the way we pay cash for projects as we go, we just weren't ready to pay cash for it. This makes that project a reality. We also have some projects on the list that'll clean our environment. The old Central Motor Pool site along Cedar is one that I would like to see get done and kind of repurposed into what I think would be a great opportunity for single-family residential right there on the, just on the outskirts of our downtown. So, I would urge you and appreciate your support of this. I think that it is not just something that we can obviously afford. The terms are very good. The overall length of the bond is much shorter than what we could typically do. It's only obligates a small portion of our TIF, and we still have a lot of capacity. I also think that this is a best practice, and I think that other cities are absolutely looking at what we're doing with this and have reached out to us to see what we are doing. And I think it could be a model for us going forward as well to maybe do a second round or such. So, would, again, urge you to support this. I think it's good for our citizens. It's good for our companies. It's good for the city. And take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the Mayor? Mr. Hazen?
We do the projects in phases. Do we do the bonds in phases too, as we need the money, or do we just bond it all at one time?
Well, I think we're approved for the one time. Catherine is here. She could probably ask how we can take, you know, how the money will kind of be accessed and distributed.
Mrs. Volker.
Thank you. Hi, Mayor. Thank you very much. I do have a question. Since bids are coming in a little less than you initially thought, would, do you think that there might be capacity to do a couple other little projects in there?
It's our goal, if it works out that way, you know, for, obviously.
The list is long.
You know, yeah, the list is long, and hopefully trends bear out and we're able to realize some significant savings, which therefore then allows us to, my intention is to do more projects. So, the more we can do, the better, in my mind. And we've got a list of projects a mile long that need done and far beyond our capacity to do even with this and others.
Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. In New, West End on the Milburn Project, is that on the list to complete the one and a half streets that need to be done?
I think we are bidding that out tomorrow.
Oh, wait.
Awarding tomorrow.
Oh.
So, we're awarding that.
Complete the...
Right, that sewer funds.
I know, I know that, but I mean, will that complete that project out there?
It comes pretty darn close if it doesn't complete it.
Yeah, I know we have one main street and two halves that have to be done.
Yeah, I know we're awarding tomorrow, so, saw it on the order of business for Board of Public Works tomorrow.
Start this summer, then?
Yep, as well as Seventh Street, which has already been awarded. So, West Sixth and up to, so West from Sixth to Seventh, the intersection at Seventh and West. And so, we, we're going to mess up your district pretty good this summer.
Is that as far as that's going to go, just the Seventh Street?
This year, it's part of three-phased projects. So, next year, we'll bite off another chunk and get further south along West and then do a couple of the side streets. And then the year following, we'll move even a little farther south. The goal is to get to Rose Park and then around Rose Park.
Yeah, that's about maybe four years then, Dave?
We'll have to see how it goes, but, you know, we, we'll get to beyond Eighth Street on the last phase, and then that last, you know, it's still a pretty big jump. I don't know if we'll phase that out or how we'll do it at this point in time, but that's the goal, and we're starting to get there.
Thank you. I see there's equipment out there on West Street there.
Yeah, and there again, that's another project where this one, different funding source. This is sewer funds.
Yeah.
But a complete tearout, brand-new, you know, separated sewers underground, new water, replacing lead water service in some cases. We are burying electric power and utilities, and then above-ground, brand-new road sidewalks, curbs, and in some cases, landscape amenities and street trees and things like that. So, that's what works for us, and that's what we're trying to kind of replicate in neighborhoods all over the city, like Niles and Cedar and others. But, and we'll be talking to you about another project fairly soon that we might have an opportunity to do too, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for His Honor?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the information, and I agree with both you and Mr. Prince with regard to the emphasis that most of you placed on the local stimulative effect of what we have set in motion here. To that end, and I realize that there are only, it sounds like there are only a handful of bids that have worked their way through the process at this point, but, you know, I'm curious, with regard to any bids that have been awarded to date, have they in fact been awarded to some local firms so that we really are hitting the goal of stimulating our local workforce?
So, not only local, but local union.
Okay, good. I appreciate that update, and again, that validates the vision and the goal I think that Council and Administration shared as we embarked upon this journey. So, I appreciate that information.
Other questions for Mayor Wood? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium.
Good evening. Catherine Finello, Krieg Devault Law Firm, 4101 Edison Lakes Parkway, Suite 100, Michoacan, Indiana. And so, I am, we are serving as Bond Counsel, and you have before you the resolution to approve the lease and the bond issue, and I gave you some wonderfully long documents along with that, including the lease and the trust indenture, which secures the bond payments. So, we've gone through a process, and I'm happy to answer questions. I don't know if you want me to actually give a presentation or if you have some specific questions that you want me to address.
It is your choice. We can turn it over to others for questions unless you have something, items you want to share with us right off the bat.
Well, I know, I will address your question. And so, the bonds are expected to be competitively bid, which means they will be put out, people will submit a bid, and the lowest interest cost will be, the purchaser with the lowest interest cost will be selected. They will, the bonds will be bid out at one time, so it will be a one-bond issue of approximately, right now, it's $50,560,000. The reason is, we have a little bit of a complicated structure here with a lease rental bond structure, so the best that we can do right now is to bid the entire amount out. Those funds will be held under the trust indenture. Becky is in the process, the city controller is in the process of selecting a trustee for the bonds. Those have been also put out for bids, so to speak, and the lowest, or the trustee with the lowest or best services will be chosen. But it will be one-bond issue, so all of the bonds will be available on day one when we close. The bonds are payable from the TIF revenues, as we have discussed, and there will be a special benefits tax backup. Now, as you probably have seen, the TIF revenues are more than enough to cover the debt service, about 330%, coverage, depending, you know, based on the debt service that will be paid under these bonds. However, they are also backed up by a special benefits tax, which is basically the ad ver lorem property tax levied in what we call the Michoacan Redevelopment District, the boundaries, which are coterminous with the city. But that really is a credit enhancement. So, that, what that's going to do, it's going to allow you to get the best interest rate possible on the bonds, even though you never expect to use it. The TIF revenues, again, are more than sufficient, but it really enhances the ability to bid out the best price for the bonds. And as the mayor or Ken said, I can't remember, but it's over, you know, about 50.56, 560, $50,560,000 over approximately 11 years with a debt service reserve. That debt service reserve also enhances the ability to sell the bonds at the best price.
Thank you. Mr. Hazen?
So, once we get the $50 million bond, if they decide to do other projects, what's on this list? Do they come back to this body, or can they just do them as long as they fall in the scope of the TIF area or whatever?
Yeah, as long as they are, you know, projects that are similar in nature. Again, we're funding these from TIF revenues, so whatever, you know, that, it's a pretty broad term, you know, redevelopment, economic development, all serves and benefits the consolidated TIF area. What the internal procedure will be to come back for those maybe projects that are not on that list, I think that would be more of an internal choice, as long as the funds are spent consistent with the nature of this bond issue, then there's not an issue from a legal perspective. But certainly, your own internal procedure of how you handle additional projects.
My last question I have is, are interest payments will start immediately, or will they start as we use the money?
February 1, 2022.
On the full?
On the full, yes. But what, you know, how we structured this bond issue is that you're not paying capitalized interest. In some respects, you know, if we were waiting to capitalize, to pay for all of the projects, we would have that period of time. Under a lease rental bond, you can't pay principal and interest on a lease rental bond until the projects are completed. So, that really means you're paying capitalized interest during the construction period. But here, because we are leasing, the underlying leased asset already exists, we avoid capitalized interest. So, all of those funds, you get a better, a pool of funds to use.
Mrs. Volker.
It's okay. Thank you. I'm just glad that there are better minds than mine that have figured all this out because it is complicated.
It is complicated, but it works.
I guess I do have one question, and this actually might be more for the mayor, but is this something that we could continue to use, the establishment of the Bond Authority and the Redevelopment Authority? Is this something that we could continue to use as a function of funding projects in the future?
The Redevelopment Authority will continue to exist for as long as the city desires. So, if there are additional projects in the future, you know, but of course, the Redevelopment Authority is generally issues lease rental bonds, so a little bit more complicated structure, and you have to kind of work through that structure. But yes, it will exist as long as the city desires.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Ms. Finello?
Well, let me echo Mrs. Volker's comments. I appreciate the work that you have done on our behalf, and you have always done a good job of taking these complex concepts and explaining to us, them to us in a very understandable fashion, so thank you for that. To go back to your comments on the special use, or special benefits tax, just, you know, underscore that component. So, that inclusion in this concept allows us to enhance our credit and our ability to be able to do this in the most cost-effective fashion, correct?
It does. It enhances market, marketing of the bonds.
And although it stands behind the TIF revenues, we are overwhelmingly in good shape with regard to TIF revenues so that no one anticipates that we would ever have to enact the special benefits tax, correct?
Correct.
If we did have to enact the benefit, special benefits tax, which is almost difficult to conceive, it would be a tax that would be assessed against the property that lies only within the consolidated TIF district itself, correct?
Within the, yes, within the Redevelopment District. I think your consolidated TIF area is actually most of your...
So, it's the redevelopment, which is...
It's the Redevelopment District, which the boundaries are the same as...
It's an overlay of the TIF District.
Yes.
All right. So, thank you again for the creative work that you and your firm have done on this. It's exciting to see it move forward.
It is. I mean, it is, you know, a structure that's used across Indiana, and I can actually say it's used across the United States. So, it's one that we talk about regularly at our very exciting National Association of Bond Lawyers Conference. So, I'm glad that Michoacan is pleased and moving forward.
Why don't you go ahead and continue to attend those meetings on our behalf and give us the executive summary of that one? We'll rely on you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else physically present who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? Then, is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Please come forward. And once again, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed resolution? Thank you. Are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Prince, I noticed that you perhaps wanted to chime in in response to Mr. Hazen's question about potential additions to the project list. Is there anything that you want to share with us along those lines, or have we moved past that point?
I just want to say briefly that part of the nature of choosing the projects that we did was to try to keep flexibility within the expenditure of funds. So, when you look at the projects that are on that list, it includes Crawford Park, and we're only funding part of the intended improvements. If we have additional funding, it can immediately go to that. Batel Park is the same way. Normane Park is the same way. So, our intent is really to spend the $45 million of capital funds allocated through this to the projects that are on that list. We do not want to complicate any kind of audit or things associated with that. But projects will grow and expand if we have additional funds, but the intent for these funds... for these funds are to keep it on that list. Now, that could enable us, in other ways, to use other TIF funds that were funded for the, or designated for those other projects to fund additional projects that were talked about. But I don't want to think, anybody to think that this is a pot of funds that someone's going to take and then move into another direction. That is not the case. This money is intended for these projects.
So, if we save 20% over what we thought we originally were going to, like, $8 million, we'll still spend that, but tied to these, or...
So, there's an additional, I want to say, and I don't, I'm rattling these off the top of my head, Tony, so forgive me. But if you look at the overall capital expenditures that we have, just in Batel Park, in Crawford Park, so Batel Park, with the bridge, the completion of the veterans, the playground, is probably another $5 million. Crawford Park, I believe, was another $4 or $5 million. So, immediately, you're at 25%. And that's not even including the design fees and soft costs. So, I don't think, I don't think there's any, even in that best-case scenario that you're illustrating, and I think that's truly a best-case scenario, 20% across the board, because a lot of these, when you look at the fire station, for example, we took our best estimate, just based on the numbers that we did for fire station number four. When we get into the actual practice, I can't imagine that we're going to have significant savings of a magnitude of 20% on that project. So...
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Prince?
So, Ken, just to follow up on that discussion, there was some reference earlier to, you know, what we hope will be, you know, potentially some opportunity to look at a second phase of this, perhaps, or to expand into the projects that we're going to use this financing vehicle for. Assuming that that would occur, would you anticipate that you would go back to that comprehensive spreadsheet that you put together, that you shared with us on the redevelopment commission, and try to program those projects into the mix, or are we so far beyond that, that it hasn't been identified what the process would look like?
So, as you're familiar with, but I'll say it for the record, so everybody listening online can hear, et cetera. But that list is put together every year. So, we update priorities every year, and there are projects that come in and go out based on changes in priorities. So, yes, in general, we'll follow that list, but it doesn't mean we won't add a project or delete a project, depending on what the priorities are at the time.
Thank you. Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Sorry for the delay, but could you refresh my memory as to the deadline or estimated deadline of the new fire station completion would be?
The deadline?
Or, no, I'm sorry, the completion.
So, the completion, just knowing how the projects are working right now, if we hire a consultant this year and bid next year, my guess is it'll take about a year to design and probably 18 months to build. So, we're probably two and a half to three years out, is my guess for the completion of that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Prince?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this point, I will once again inquire as to whether or not there are any council members who wish to speak. Hearing none, then I'll call for the question.
Questions?
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
The resolution passes 9 to 0.
Ordinance is on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2021-13, an ordinance amended Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Michawaca, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Michawaca, Indiana. This is to rezone from C-1 to R-1, 1803 Lincoln Way West.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the City of Michawaca, your committee on land use planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2021-13, report that they have examined said matter, and it, in their opinion, should be adopted. This is assigned by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will now move into the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2021-13. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Please.
Andrew Mick, I'm here representing Morgan Mick, going to build a single-family home on that lot. So, that's it in a nutshell.
Very succinct, Mr. Mick. Good to see you. Any questions for Mr. Mick? Tell your daughter, tell your daughter that she owes you anyway for having to come here and make a presentation on her behalf.
Yeah, I really made a presentation. Showed up, said, "Okay."
You're a good father.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are we done?
Unless you have something else that you want to share with us, we are done.
Thanks, folks. Appreciate it. Take care.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would. Hearing no one, is there anyone physically present who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance, even though the petitioner has flown the coop? Please come forward to the podium. That was my invitation to you, Mr. Mayor. Then, is there anyone participating remotely who wishes to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 9 to 0.
Thank you. Privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak with respect to non-agenda items only, under privilege of the floor. Thank you. We will then move on. We have no unfinished business, so new business. Is there any new business to come before the council? Mr. Mamalenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing new to bring up, but just more of a comment and a word of thanks to the Parks Department and Ms. Councilwoman DeMaye's efforts to put together some volunteer hours for, to help beautify and spread malt, pick weeds, and cigarette butts, and all the above. It was a great couple hours, and thanks to all that were involved.
Thank you, and thank you, Maggie, for your work on that project. Any other new business to come before the council? If not, then a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you, folks.